Welcome, everyone. It is 5:15 on Monday, May 11th, 2020. And the Carroll County, Carroll City Council Meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In support of Iowa Governor Kim Reynolds proclamation declaring a state public health disaster emergency in Iowa, with the current COVID-19 situation making it impossible and impractical to meet in one location, the Carroll City Council, Carroll City Hall will remain closed to the public.
This conference will now be reported.
Carroll City Council Meeting. The meeting will be made available telephonically and they will be able to, the public will be able to hear and participate in the council meeting by calling the previous numbers that were posted. At this point, please note the roll call. I believe is Councilman Dirks with us?
Yes.
So we have five, no, Jerry Fleischer is not here, but should be coming. The first item we have this evening is the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the April 27th meeting. Approval of bills and claims. Under licenses and permits, we have a renewal of a Class E liquor license with carryout beer, carryout wine, which includes native wine and Sunday sales for Casey's General Store, number 3025. We also have a new Class B native wine permit with catering privilege, with outdoor service and Sunday sales at Barata Steakhouse. We have appointments to committee commissions and boards by the council, which is the following three is Lois New for Parks and Recreation for a three-year term, Joshua Spoor for Parks and Recreation for a three-year term, and Chad Ross for a Parks Recreation for a three-year term. And we also have the sale of the surplus city property fire truck. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the oral requests and communications from the audience. Are there any in the audience that have any concerns with items not on the agenda this evening? Nothing? Seeing none, we'll move on to proclamations. And our first proclamation this evening is on National Foster Care Month that states whereas May is National Foster Care Month and in Iowa, there are hundreds of children and youth in foster care being provided with a safe and stable home with the compassion and nurture of a foster family and whereas there is no task more important than ensuring all Iowa children grow up healthy and safe and whereas foster, kinship, and adoptive families who open their hearts and homes to children during times of crisis play a vital role in helping families heal and reconnect, thereby launching Iowa youth into successful adulthood and whereas foster families work hard to ensure children remain in their communities and schools, resulting in a continual need for more foster families in counties across Iowa and whereas all young people in or leaving foster care deserve to have a permanent meaningful connection to caring adults who become a supportive and lasting presence in their lives and whereas the Iowa Department of Human Services and LSI Foster Care and Adoption and numerous individuals and organizations work to increase public awareness of the needs of children in foster care, as well as the dedicated and valuable contributions of foster parents and now therefore I, Eric P. Jensen, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Carroll, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Foster Care Month in Carroll, Iowa, and urge all Iowans to help children in foster care build their brightest futures. The second proclamation that we have this evening kind of helps to celebrate some of the, one of the top 10 public works leaders named in Iowa. Or is that nationwide? Nationwide. That is Randy Crawl and he's made it into the magazine of the APW Reporter. Okay. Congratulations again, Randy, and hopefully we can have a open house for you when things get a little bit better. The proclamation for National Public Works Week states whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the City of Carroll and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Carroll to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community and whereas the year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore I, Eric P. Jensen, Mayor of the City of Carroll, do hereby designate the week of May 17th through the 23rd of 2020 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize these substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you. Under ordinances, we have none. So then our next item is resolutions. And the first one is the HMA resurfacing with milling project. And it is 5:23 and we'll open a public hearing. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The plan specifications from a contract and estimated cost for the HMA resurfacing with milling project were filed on January 20th by JEO Consulting Group. The plans generally detail HMA resurfacing along with other associated work on West Street from Seventh Street to Eighteenth Street and on Grant Road from the Middle Raxton River Bridge to the UP Railroad. The specifications are the Iowa Department of Transportation standard specification for highway and bridge construction and the form of contract is the Iowa DOT contract. The estimated cost of the improvement is $946,183.21. With that estimated construction cost, the total project cost is now estimated at $1,156,833.21. Funding for the project is anticipated to be a combination of road use tax, bond, block grant, fund balance, moss, and stormwater utility for a total, current total of $1,575,000. Project schedule includes bid receipt by the DOT on May 19th of 2020 and construction completion this calendar year. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend consideration of the resolution adopting the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the HMA resurfacing with milling project.
Randy, are they going to do a new bridge or are they just resurfacing the bridge?
No, the project actually starts at the north end of the bridge.
Okay. Are there any questions from the public with regards to the HMA resurfacing project? Any? Nothing? No response?
Randy?
Yep.
On the funding, it's $419,000 more that you have available. How come that is? Why are we going that high with that?
Well, we had earlier projections of a more costly project. We did a couple of things to reduce the cost of it. And certainly we haven't received bids yet, so we don't know where they will come in. But of course, if they do come in well within the currently projected funding, that funding would be recommended to be carried over to the next street resurfacing 2021 project. Okay.
Any other questions for Randy? Any, or any from the public? If not, it is 5:26 and we'll close the public hearing. Are there any other questions from council? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the HMA resurfacing with milling project for 2020.
Move.
I have a first.
Second.
And a second. There is no other discussion. Laverne, did you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. The next item under resolutions is the water service, sewer service, and annexation agreement with McLaughlin Family Companies. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. McLaughlin Family Companies owns and has started operation at a facility which is a former Midwest Homes building at 2363 Ford Highway 11. This property is currently an unincorporated Carroll County and the property also is not contiguous to the City of Carroll. In the past, the City of Carroll has only permitted utilities to be extended to properties that are incorporated into the City of Carroll. McLaughlin Families Companies, Inc. has requested that the city permit the extension of utilities to their property and has signed a water service, sewer service, and annexation agreement related to this request. This agreement outlines that at such time, the property would be adjoining corporate limits of the city with a common boundary that the property would at that point be annexed to the city. And also note that our city code does require such an agreement for properties that are outside the city of the Carols. That's why we have this agreement also before you. Additionally, this agreement permits the city to impose a rate for customers outside the city for water and sewer usage. Now, while we, a higher rate, but we haven't proposed any rates. That is a possibility in the future. McLaughlin, as indicated in the agreement, has agreed to such higher rule rates. Initially, any sanitary sewer discharge would be limited to domestic, non-industrial sanitary discharge. And I would note that with our current copper limits and the MPDS permit with the Iowa DNR, the city is not permitted at this point to accept any non-domestic industrial sanitary sewer discharge that's generated on the site. The agreement does note that any future proposed non-domestic industrial sanitary sewer discharge would be subject to approval by both the City of Carroll and the Iowa DNR. Staff would be happy to answer any questions and we would recommend consideration of the resolution approving the water sewer service and the annexation agreement with McLaughlin Family Company. I do believe we have some representatives that would be available if you have any questions for this.
What's the property that's in between that they're not contiguous?
There's actually a few properties.
Oh, there's a few. There's more than one?
There's actually a residential drive and then there's a, I think there's two additional commercial properties. That would be to the west. To the north, you have the Farner-Bachan property. So likely, if that would ever annex in, that would be probably the trigger, I would guess, for this property.
How far out does the city line go? Does it just go to Farner? Or does it?
Goes to Pella.
Goes to Pella.
On the south side of the road.
Okay.
On the north side, it goes through, the main Farner-Bachan Core Mark Building is in the City of Carroll. Part of the truck parking is in the City of Carroll, but then the remainder of the truck parking to the east and then some farm ground is all in unincorporated Carroll County.
And they, it was, they cover the cost of extending the line?
Yes, they wouldn't be paying all those costs.
We don't have to do that, right? Any other questions for Mike? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve a water service, sewer service, and annexation agreement with McLaughlin Family Companies Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Cott?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. You'll come back at a later time with fees or something? We'll update that later. We'll update fees at a later time?
Yeah, I would say when we were working on some fee, potential fees, especially with our sanitary sewer. I guess at that point, it's where we're potentially making changes if the council so desires.
Sounds good. Thank you. Under resolutions, the final item is the allow a 10 punch, allow 10 punch cards for the 2020 Aquatic Center season. And Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The free tonight is a one-year, a one-season opportunity to sell 10 punch cards for the 2020 aquatic season. Under Chapter 14.01, the current Carroll ordinance, which is a city enterprise fee, lift, family memberships, caregivers, single membership, bulk rate when you buy 100 punches at one time. And we sell about anywhere from 500 to 900 of those punches a year and then daily admission of four-years-old and older at $6. So that's what we're currently have with the Aquatic Center this summer. But with everything going on and a number of factors that are really going to influence what our summer season is going to be, the summer, some of the questions, when will the pool be allowed to open? A typical summer is about 90 days. How many swimmers will be allowed in the area at one time? If there are limitations, staff, staff can be recommended two-hour increments throughout the day to try to allow enough people to get use of the facility. And when will school start? If for any reason, school starts early, that will influence our hours and those items. So there's so many uncertainties. I think people are gonna, we, Mike and I and staff are wondering, you know, how many memberships will we sell this year, just with the unknown? And so we wanted to bring back the 10 punch cards for $45, which is the same thing as a bulk rate. If organizations want to buy for their employees or sell them back to their employees, 100 punches, they can do that, or individuals this year will be able to buy a punch card. 10 punches for $45 if they want to buy 20 or whatever they want to buy for the season. So with that, you know, I would answer any questions regarding this opportunity.
Yeah, I didn't have any problem with it. I think it'll work okay. And it's just for this season, so we don't have to worry about any taking it off for the, for next year, so.
No, it's a short-term.
Yep.
Just a short-term, yeah. Are there any other questions for Jack?
Jack, and if you do purchase these and in the event we aren't able to open the pool, then I assume this is all refundable then, or what?
Yes.
Or do you plan to, yep, okay.
Yeah, we would just refund them, have a clean slate going into next year.
Hmm, okay, thank you.
I'd also make a couple of comments. I mean, we're making preparations. I know I received a couple of calls from the public wanting to know, you know, are we open? I think we're really scared that we weren't going to open the pool. You know, we're making preparations. In fact, people will start seeing as early as tomorrow water go into the outdoor aquatic center. There's just a lot of uncertainties right now. I mean, currently with the proclamation that's in place, we're not permitted to reopen the aquatic center at this point, even if we wanted to. It's ready. But we are targeting that we will have the facility ready for Friday, May the 29th. Now, obviously, that's going to be based on if, if public health will allow us to open the pool. Also, what kind of restrictions are in place? We've also been in discussions with a lot of the regional pool operators. And based on what they do, that may cause us to have different operating policies than what we've had in the past. And we're really talking with our regional, you know, pool operators, so that we're kind of all on the same page. But also if we see, for example, an area pool closed, we may want to restrict that we only allow Carroll residents or Carroll County residents to use the facility because we wouldn't want to see big migration of other communities trying to use our pool and just impact if, you know, if we have a capacity limit, then, you know, we want to serve our residents first from that aspect. So what I would say is we just, we have a lot of unknowns right now on when we can get it open and how we'll get it open, but the arable is what we're targeting to. So I just would ask people to bear with us as we work towards that.
Is there any maintenance stuff that you need to get done before, or?
So it takes us about three weeks to get the pool open.
Oh, okay.
And so we're going through that stuff right now.
Going through that phase, right?
You know, getting water into the building.
You got to add the chemicals and stuff too, yeah.
And filling it, doing the water, doing chemical balance. I mean, it's a process that we go through every year to get the pool reopened, and that's what we're doing now.
Okay.
Mike, for anybody that would ask the question why we're spending the time and money to fill it and treat it and everything else, not knowing if we're going to be open, the response would be?
I think we think it's pretty important that we try to get these type of facilities open. It may be different rules that we have, but anticipate that we will be allowed to open it. But like as Jack indicated, we may have a capacity where we can only have 50 people in the facility at a time, which really means about 40 patrons in the owner of the facility. So it's going to be, it's going to be different, but we think it's important to have these, these opportunities reopen for the community.
And I believe we had a discussion at one time too. I think it was probably the indoor pool, the whole mechanics of why you have the water in and stuff to basically stabilize the foundation, whatnot. Is that all true to our sort of the outside?
Another reason, I mean, it's just, it's been dry right now, so that's not really a big concern. But just having water in those pools help them from basically becoming boats and floors. So yeah, having water in, there's a good thing.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the proclamation you referenced, Mr. Pogie Weaver, was Governor Reynolds' proclamation that's in place and we are waiting for any changes that come down from her, correct?
Correct. I mean, we're, we watch that. We don't get any heads up or special notifications. So just like the rest of the public, we really watch for those proclamations to come out. So yeah, we're just eagerly waiting to see what direction we get.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mike or Jack? Laverne? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but I don't want you to feel left out.
I'm good.
Okay?
No, I'm good.
Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve the option of a purchase, purchasing of a 10 punch card for the Carroll Family Aquatic Pool for $45 for the 2020 season only.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is under reports and it's set a public hearing date for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 Budget Amendment Number Two. And Laura, when you're ready.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. After we had already started the process for our first budget amendment, the city had received some good news that the city was awarded a grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a CDPG or Community Economic Development Grant as part of all the CARES Act and the stuff surrounding the COVID-19. This was one of the grant opportunities that have been put out there for different entities is for cities to help out in the local community. So the city was awarded $49,050 to be used to assist some other local nonprofits in essence to try to, to provide restaurant gift cards to families and help to cover some processing costs of meat that's been donated to one of the food programs. In order for the city to, what do I want to say, legally and properly account for the money, we need to show that the money is coming into the city's books and then, then getting distributed out. So there's a revenue in and an expense out. So that's the main driver behind the reason for this budget amendment. Also included in this budget amendment is the expense to replace the doors of the, the police department when the library renovation project was going on. Council did discuss this at a previous meeting. And then the final item included in our budget amendment is to upgrade the router at City Hall. The new router would be more secure and allow for secure access for employees to tell a worker to work from home if, you know, when that would possibly be needed. All these items are run through the general fund, as that's noted in the memo. So this is the first step is getting in the budget amendment process is to set the public hearing for the next council meeting, which is actually Tuesday, May 26th, the day after Memorial Day.
Are there any other questions for Laura? I think that was pretty self-explanatory. Thank you. Otherwise, I will look for a motion to set Tuesday, May 26th, 2020 as the date for a public hearing for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 Budget Amendment Number Two.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item under reports is the Youth Sports Lighting Project 2020, certificate of substantial completion. And Jack, please.
Contractor Drift Electric has substantially completed the lighting project out at the youth sports field, the three fields that we had in the project. There is absolutely nothing left for them to do. They've completed everything. So they, as far as I know, there's no punch lift that needs to be completed. So we are complete with that project and that establishes April 1st as the completion date. For Drift Electric, this will establish that we can make the final payment to them within the next 30 days. Project went real well, went on budget and was out one night, had the lights on, they looked great. Great lighting. It's going to be nice for years to come.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jack. Are there any other questions for Jack?
A thank you to the city manager. You provided some pictures in the night of the complex. Looked very nice.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody's been out to use it. I know the barricades were still there, but they were spread apart, so. If not, we'll look for a motion to accept the certificate of substantial completion for the youth sports complex lighting project 2020.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, Laverne? Sorry, didn't mean to leave you out again.
No, we're good.
Good. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman? Cott?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item under reports is the Water Distribution Main Replacement 2019, certificate of substantial completion. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. King Construction has substantially completed the Water Distribution Main Replacement 2019 project. There were two sections to that project. The Crawford Street section was, substantial completion was August 14th, 2019. The water tower connection was completed on October 28th, 2019. The contract substantial completion date was September thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. Water Tower Connection portion of the project was delayed to coordinate with the ongoing water tower uh storage tower rehabilitation project. Final completion of all work was this spring, April eleventh of two thousand twenty. The final construction cost that I have had provided you in the memorandum, uh, we have continued to work on those costs since the uh creation of that memorandum, and I can provide updated numbers. The final uh construction cost is currently estimated at three hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. And that compares to a uh contract cost, an amended contract cost of three hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of acceptance of the certificate of completion for the Water Distribution Main Replacement two thousand nineteen project.
Uh, how much longer for this, the water tower, to get done, Randy?
Uh, the water tower completion dates are um June thirtieth for the uh tank itself and to be refilled and in use. And then another month was provided for the completion of the legs, the uh sandblasting painting of the legs. Uh, those were set by the change order that was recently approved for that project.
Randy, the numbers that you you said are different than what I have written on my agenda.
Yes, those are different, and that's why I provided those tonight. We continued following create of that memorandum to uh verify uh unit costs or units and their cost and came up with what we believe now is the the final estimated price.
Could you repeat?
Hand it out?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Laverne.
No. They were not distributed uh just verbally tonight.
Could you give me those numbers again, Randy? Or give us the numbers?
Yes, I can. The uh, the final estimated construction cost is now three hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. That would be in place of your memorandum that was three hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Okay, and the comparison to the contract cost, the the current final contract cost would be three hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars. And that's a replacement for the memorandum number at three hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars.
That three twenty-seven, does that include that five thousand dollars for the extra Carroll label too? Is that, wasn't that about right?
No, this is the distribution.
That's just the distribution, man. Okay.
Yes, this is not the water tower project.
Does not anything do with the water tower. Okay.
Right. One of the sections of this project was a pipe from the water tower to Main Street. And that was performed in this contract.
Gotcha. Any other questions for Randy? Laverne, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, otherwise, I'll look for a motion to uh uh approve the acceptance of the certificate of substantial completion for the Water Distribution Main Replacement twenty nineteen project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bays?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the final item on the agenda is the COVID nineteen discussion. And Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we started with our last council meeting, we're just going to uh kind of provide some updates with our our operational changes. One comment I would make for the general public, and I'll show this on my computer now, is uh we do have all the information on our website, say, com slash COVID nineteen. We are attempting to try to keep this up to date. So what is up there was last day updated, last Friday. And it does go through kind of all the different uh operational statuses of all our departments um and what we're, where we're at. So everything, like the Parks Department, the changes we made with the ball fields, it's all listed up there. So we're trying to get a one-stop shop uh for information in addition to like Facebook and other social media channels that we use. Uh, what I would say is similar to the state and most businesses, you know, the city's really looking at a a slow and methodical reopening. Um, first in mind of protecting the services we provide to the community, um, but also protecting the staff that do provide those uh services and the public we serve. Uh, some of our services that we provide, we have very limited staff. And so that that will routinely work in close quarters. If you think about like the water and Stantry Sewer Department um on a typical work week prior to COVID nineteen, uh, they would be in every day, Monday through Friday, working in close con- um uh close contact with each other. Obviously, in this current environment, uh, with the low numbers of employees we have in those divisions, uh, we do have those operational changes that we changed in uh for the foreseeable future, that that's going to remain the the operational status quo. Um, other operationals in other departments, we will look at uh reopening as we can, but again, it'll be a very uh slow and methodical uh process, talking with a lot of our partners on how they're reopening and what makes logical sense for us. But again, paramount is services are still being provided, um, just kind of in an alternative format right now. And I think overall is working very well for our citizens and our staff uh overall. Um, with that, um, I'm gonna start with Jack, um, if he wants to talk about some of the changes and then what's been going on with the rec center, the golf course, I think he's gonna update us today.
Thank, thank you, Mike. Um, May one, we opened the rec center to the gym and the fitness, and the fitness area, the weight room, to thirty-five patrons in each area. Um, so far, since May one, we've had six hundred and eleven people in there, so that comes out to be about sixty-one per day. Weekends have been significantly lower. Um, and numbers just generally about sixty a day. When you open at five-thirty in the morning till seven, that's fourteen hours. So we're averaging about five people, four to five people per hour uh in the facility. Typically, uh, I look back at two thousand nineteen and two thousand eighteen. Two thousand nineteen, we had two thousand five hundred fifty-one uh the first ten days of May. And two thousand eighteen, two thousand one hundred and forty-two. Um, twenty-four hours, I'll jump back to that. Twenty twenty, so far this year, we've had ten. Last year, we had ten. Uh, prior, prior to that, we didn't have twenty-four hours. Revenue significantly lower at both rec center and the golf course. Um, rec center, we don't have memberships for April and May or uh daily admission. Those numbers are significantly down. Last year, April, we had about thirty thousand dollars in memberships, thirty-five hundred in daily admission. Two thousand eighteen in April, twenty-two thousand uh in memberships and twenty-seven hundred in daily. So last year was a better year, about six, seven thousand, but obviously this year, um, there's not much revenue either in uh April or May for membership daily admission. Um, two thousand nineteen in May, memberships was twenty-seven thousand. Two thousand eighteen was twenty-three thousand again. Daily admission, both years around twenty-four hundred, twenty-six one year, twenty-two uh another year. So um, daily mission significantly down. Memberships, we've uh forfeited memberships for April and May for members. Um, when we start to collect memberships again, that'll be the tail if people feel comfortable coming back or otherwise. Um, they'll want to cancel the memberships. We'll try to talk them into just suspending it. We can hold that membership till they feel comfortable and then restart it up um with that. Any questions with that? We're sanitizing, we're, well, we talked about two weeks ago, we're sanitizing very often machines. We have extra staff that are focusing on that on nights and weekends, uh, when Bob and the full-time staff is not there. So we've tried to wipe down handles, areas as much as possible, and uh we've, we've just had low numbers.
Uh, Jack, this is Jerry. I have a
Yes.
Uh, I was, I was wondering if, at this time, we're we're not collecting for people who already have memberships, correct?
Correct.
All right. So if someone comes in and registers to be a member now, what are we doing? Just taking no money at all from them and just calling them a member?
Yep. We would enter them as a membership uh at zero dollars and we'll have it activated.
Has that happened? Like someone new in town has come in and decided to join and we just explained that?
I don't know that answer.
Okay.
I can find out. That's an easy question. Ask Pam in the morning. Um, yeah.
And I, I think back up for a second. When we weren't collecting in May, it was based on us closing in in March.
In March and April, right?
So basically, because we were closed in March and April, we charged in March for current members.
Right. So we're a month. Oh, okay. We're off, we're off by a month.
Yeah.
That's why we're not charging in May. So if we have a new member come in, we should be charging.
Cause they could use it. Yeah, that's okay.
So the reason we're not doing current members is because we, we were closed in March.
Right. I forgot about the month of off.
It's just the, it's because of that, like.
Yeah.
I do think there's gonna be a discussion at some point, likely at the next council meeting, on how we want to handle the rec center fees in June. Um, do we want to keep doing, you know, keep our current rates in place? Um, and the reason I would bring that up is, you know, we have some facilities that are closed, namely the pool, which is probably a number of our members that exclusively use the pool. Um, we have other issues where, for example, we're not allowing uh individuals under the age of eighteen in the facility. Uh, part of that is just the the cap that we have imposed on us, um, for the five in the gym. So I think we're gonna have to talk. We, we don't hear anything yet.
Right.
Anything else for Jack? Thank you, Jack. Appreciate your time.
Do you want to talk about?
Um, there.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Uh, the municipal golf course, similar, um, went back to nineteen, two thousand nineteen and two thousand eighteen. Um, memberships in two thousand eighteen were three hundred ninety-two, two thousand nineteen, three seventy-nine. Currently, we're at two hundred and twelve members, which is down. Um, but also leagues haven't, have just started, so we're starting, we're starting to get some of those memberships in the next couple of weeks. So we'll see an increase on uh memberships once those uh men, seniors and women's leagues start. Typically, a lot of people will come in and buy their membership at the time leagues start. Um, revenue in March um is basically just ACH payments that people do over the twelve months. Um, we, we weren't open till April. Um, so there's really no green fees in um in March, but we do have those ACH payments of most of those uh, when a hundred twenty-seven members were doing ACH at the time March started. April, um, memberships went up a little bit because we gained another seven ACH name payments. And then seventy-one people bought their memberships, either adult, a senior, senior couple, family memberships. So those in April picked up significantly. In May, we've only had a short time. Those numbers have um leveled. Uh, we've had a few additional ACH signups and and no, no one's come in in May, as of last Friday, and bought an additional membership where they paid for the membership for the season uh in May yet. So our revenue is significantly down. Um, typically, in um, I'll, for instance, May of eighteen was when we had the big jump on our memberships, a hundred and five thousand in one month, where last year it was in April, we had the big month. And so far, we we just haven't had the big jump in memberships like, like we do. We, we had the consistent ACHs that have continued. And then green fees, um, significantly down compared to where, where we've been in the past. So uh, people that are playing are probably members, and um, we have them out there. We spread, usually a tee time is seven minutes apart. We've gone to tw- uh, ten to twelve minutes in between tee times. And um, just trying to space them out a little bit, so we have a a little bit more distance, a social distance to happen. And what I see out there at the muni is groups that are following the policies and and trying to stay apart. One, one to a cart unless it's a family member or a household member, then there's two in the carts. So one thing we did, so um, I would go out uh with a friend and it's ten dollars for nine holes. So me and the guy or person I'm playing with, we split it five each for that uh ten dollars for the nine holes. Well, since we're saying there's social distancing, we're only charging five dollars per person per cart. You know, we didn't want to tack that on um onto the fee, even though it is twice the gas, but um we just felt like we didn't want to uh create additional financial burden on anyone, so we, we did that. Um, I guess with that, I would answer any questions. Um, very sporadic, you know, we've had days because it's April and May in Iowa, we've had some really cool days. We didn't open, and we've had really nice days and a couple of weekends that are just crazy busy.
Is the clubhouse open, Jack? Are they, is she serving food?
Clubhouse is open. Um, they're, yep, they're serving food and drinks. And it's, and she's, she's done the requirements of the maximum per table, and the tables are six feet apart. Um, and the thing is that's, that she needs to keep doing is if I go in there to eat, I can stay, but once I'm done eating and if I would want to just uh drink, then I gotta leave. You can't be in the facility uh drinking. You, you, you're going to be in there to be eating.
Is the outside patio open too?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. We're trying to keep people to golf and to eat and to, and to leave the facility, keep moving on. So other people can get in and golf and move, move through the course in a timely fashion.
Okay. Anything else?
That was really the only planned one. I don't know if any of the other department heads have anything they want to add.
So Rachel's there. I don't know if she had anything more.
Um, I don't think I have anything additional other than we just expanded our curbside service um in regards to the number of days that we're doing it. And also with the different materials that we're allowing for curbside service, um, we're also allowing people to send in their prints mobilely so they can pick those up. We're also doing computer usage by appointment as well right now um during this time, as we continue to evaluate how we want to um do a rephased opening of the library. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I got my library card. And I logged in and I can browse the uh collection. That's pretty cool.
Yes, you can, and you can put them on reserve and you can get them picked up. We also have seen an increase in our um ebook circulation as well. Um, definitely a lot of people asking for that information as well.
So if there's a, if there's a book that you don't have, but I find it in one of the sister libraries that you guys kind of use, do, how do I, do I contact you guys directly or just put the request in?
Yeah, you can contact us. Yep, you can contact us directly. Um, depending on the book, we, if it's a newer book, we would look at purchasing it. Um, if it's something that's a little older, um, maybe not so much, um, we could look at seeing, about getting it from another library. We could certainly do that.
Thank you, yeah.
Yep.
Anything else for Rachel? Thanks, Rachel. Since the chief's here, does he have anything? Since the chief's here, does he have anything? Nothing?
I mean, changes.
Okay.
We'll we'll keep providing good services and we'll get through this. It will be an end that'll hopefully be sooner than later. So bear with us as we work through it all.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mike. And with that, uh no comments this evening. Any comments from the council?
I have a few, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Clay.
Um, you know, we've had a lot of people reaching out to us on various programs. A lot of them recreational is what I've received. I just wanted to thank everyone for reaching out to the council and please continue to reach out and find us. We're here to help and to serve you. So just thank you for those who have reached out to us either by email or personally. It's appreciated.
Laverne, did you have anything? I don't wanna leave you out again.
No, it's just the 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 video on the meeting froze, so we don't see anything on this.
Yeah, we had technical issues, Laverne. Welcome to technology.
Wow, I sure did freeze, didn't I?
You know, that that
Magnetic personality.
This is Clay again. That brings up another thing I wanted to talk about is for the sake of technology. And we've all hung in here pretty hard on on COVID nineteen, coming in and being present for council meetings. But could we provide a better level of service if we went to a virtual meeting, not being here in the chambers, just at our own terminals?
In reality, we could. It, you know, we are basically bringing a couple of systems together to try to do this virtually. Um knowing that Laverne was going to be remote tonight, uh we did some things to try to divide the feed of this room both to YouTube and to go to meeting. This is the first time we did that. And that's what what caused the issue this evening. Now, what I'll tell you is we are also recording this meeting separately to CAT six. And so that feed is separate from what we're sending out to YouTube and go to meeting. So we will have a good copy loaded up tomorrow on YouTube. So from the public, they're gonna see the whole video at the end. It's just this live component. If we were all uh remote, uh we probably would still have the mayor here um and a couple of staff, but we'd all be working off these terminals, um our computer terminals. We wouldn't have the issue that we're facing here tonight and kind of the, we have some audio things we have to kind of overcome. Um and and so it's just, it's bringing a lot of different technology together. The more you bring those together, the more complicated it gets and the more it can fall apart. So um you know, I would say part of it too is we'll have to see what the social distancing brings us tomorrow. I know Kim Reynolds is gonna make additional recommendations.
Yeah.
Um but you know, there's still probably gonna be the six foot requirement. Uh there'll be some occupancy requirements. Uh so for example, this room where we typically have a little over fifty occupancy in it, uh we still may have, you know, some just from a six foot standpoint, we're probably gonna still have to do some of this technology just for the public because we may not be able to have staff, council and public all in one space for a while. So um we'll have to work through some of these challenges right now.
I would think it'd be something we should consider as a council is to going to a full one full system or the other. And since we're not legally allowed to go to our standard system, perhaps in the interim, we consider going to our own home PCs or terminals to to join the meeting and make it a better experience for the public as a whole. I don't know if we have any appetite for that and I certainly don't look for an answer tonight, but I think we should consider it.
Well, I think, you know, with Laverne doing what he did tonight, I think maybe we'd get some feedback to see what his experience was on that outside part. But if the restrictions are less, we can keep going where we're at too, so. But I think in order to get
It well, it pretty well went for me pretty good. The only thing is, is once in a great while, the audio would freeze for like two to three seconds. And that was about it, just randomly. But otherwise, it was fine.
And I I know I sit and I watch on the news. I have my TV on in the office and they'll have remote uh journalists remote in. And you're watching, all of a sudden, their audio and their picture freezes and it stutters. And then it catches up and I'm sure it's just the technicality of the speed of the internet and stuff that has to catch up too, so. With that, thanks, Clay. Uh if there's no comments from the city manager, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion in a second. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
We are adjourned.